New Master, here. Wilson?
Here.
And Fahey.
Would you please join, stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have an agenda in front of us. Is there approval for the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Wilson. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Chapman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No opposed. We also have in front of us a consent agenda. This is stationary items that come before the Board on a monthly basis, but one of the things that we are always surprised by is the generosity of the community and their several, several large donations to the schools. So we would like to thank them very much. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Kimball. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Wilson. This calls for a roll call vote.
Chapman?
Aye.
Kimball?
Aye.
Mullin?
Aye.
Do I read the people who are here?
No.
Okay. New Master?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
All ayes, motion passes. This is a part of the Board meeting that is the public, public forum. We asked the public to fill out cards that are located on the table over there. I don't see any cards up here. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address the Board? Okay, we will go on to the first information item, which is C1, which is update on strategic planning. Dr. Kaszczak?
Thank you Chair, members of the Board.
Thank you Chair, members of the Board. I would like to welcome Ange Nelson and Lindsay Lammers. Oh, I'm sorry. We have a... Alright, we have a public forum item.
Okay.
So Mr. Mullin?
If you don't have a... Sorry.
Yep, we'll go back to our, to the public forum portion of the Board. If we have a, someone here would like to speak? Do we have a, do we have a card that you could bring up, please?
You guys don't need to fill out the card, just...
You can get it afterwards if you...
Okay. Hi, welcome.
Hi. Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Good evening, members of the Board, Chair and Superintendent. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you again. I am Erin Florn and this is Lynn Hazelman. We're both parents of children who attend White Bear Lake Schools and struggle with dyslexia. We are joined tonight by several other parents and represent most of our school districts and our, schools in our fine district. In addition to being parents in the White Bear Lake School District, I work as a nurse practitioner and Ms. Hazelman is an educator, tutor and business owner. As many of you know, we both volunteer as advocates for children with dyslexia and learning disabilities related to dyslexia. The question I'm sure you're asking is why are we here again tonight? Governor Dayton and our nation have proclaimed October as Dyslexia Awareness Month. We are here to make you aware of dyslexia and its overreaching impact on the students in White Bear Lake. Recently, Yale researcher Dr. Sally Shavitz and her husband, who are some of the foremost experts in dyslexia, spoke in Minnesota. In plain language, they discussed the struggles and triumphs associated with dyslexia. Shortly thereafter, the Pacer Center's newsletter highlighted the Minnetonka School District, which has taken the initiative to train teachers in every district school in the Wilson Language Reading Program. The Wilson Language Program is a structured language curriculum that is aligned with Orton-Gillingham principles and supported by the science of reading. Children in their district who have been identified with the characteristics of dyslexia and similar learning styles, no matter which school they attend, can access this high-quality instruction. We learned that this change came about in Minnetonka after parents like us met with the district to share their stories. After learning the successes occurring in Minnetonka, we were confronted with the question, why can't White Bear Lake Schools do the same? What was it that motivated Minnetonka to take this step? How can our district provide better guidance for refined teachers so our students can experience a more appropriate remediation process? We have worked to engage with our district leaders at all levels. We have attended multiple meetings, shared resources, and exchanged emails on various literacy topics. Currently, we have a growing group of concerned stakeholders. We know that there is a knowledge gap. We know this because our students experience it. I would contend that in a time where test scores are continually used to rate schools, this fact combined with the stories parents brought forth contributed to a change that will benefit both the district and the students. We have heard from, heard of and from families who have moved to private schools, filed state complaints, and even filed lawsuits when their child's needs have not been met. This is not our desire. Our desire is the same as for every parent for their own child, a chance at a great education, the opportunity to succeed, and more fundamentally, the ability to read and write at the level of their peers as part of a free, appropriate public education. An investment like the one made by Minnetonka Schools and their teaching staff is an investment that will carry forward for generations of students to come. This knowledge will allow them to service students with the characteristics of dyslexia and related disabilities more effectively. As we looked at White Bear Lake Schools' strategic plan, we deduced that Minnetonka did exactly what our plan calls for. Increasing identification and evidence-based prescriptive teaching strategies will increase the number of students who benefit. Per our own mission statement, it states, "The mission of White Bear Lake Area School District, a leader in innovative education and community partnerships, is to ensure that our students develop a love for learning, excel academically, and are inspired to realize their dreams." It goes on to say that White Bear Lake Schools will develop a comprehensive understanding of our students' needs and interests to ensure students are challenged and excelling academically. This is a lofty goal, but an attainable one. This is also our desire, our home, our district, our neighborhood, and where we wish to work together for the betterment of all students, including dyslexia students. I think that's my three. So what we're asking is for a three-day training in the Wilson Language Program. We'd like our literacy coaches, our reading specialists, and our elementary special ed. teachers to attend. I bet you're thinking we can't afford that. I propose that we offer this training to these staff members and offer neighboring districts a chance to buy in for seats. Fifty percent for White Bear Lake staff, fifty percent buy-in from neighboring districts. This would allow our literacy coaches and additional specialists to obtain these essential tools for their toolkit. We additionally have an open invitation to speak with the leaders in Minnetonka. They will report that their investment is generating higher-quality learning, that this is opening doors and genuinely allowing them to close the achievement gap. They will report that they have at least two Wilson-trained educators in every school in their district. Teachers are thankful and they're appreciative. Many of our most highly-trained teachers, even ours, even our teachers with master's degrees in education, have never received this kind of training. Our universities simply don't teach it yet. Further, we ask that this be completed this year. We are not asking for a task force. We are not asking for a strategic plan that will eat away the precious time that our kids have. We are asking for specific training for those that are on our front lines. This is a win-win situation that can be multiplied as the, as the principle is applied to all of our dyslexic students. The toll has been and continues to be significant. It has been shared with us by the district leadership that we will, we try to use the best practices that are available, including remediating struggling readers. Unfortunately, this is not what we, nor the other families that are here, have experienced. Instruction that works for dyslexic brains works for most, including those that aren't dyslexic. If science-driven instruction for the dyslexic brain is classroom-wide, most can stay in our general classroom and opt out of special education. This is an intelligent population and capable of learning when they have access to the appropriate strategies for their brain type. We ask again today how we can support the making of the White Bear Lake School District a more welcoming and educationally productive place for all students, especially those with learning disabilities such as highly prevalent dyslexia. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Dr. Kaszczak will move on to C1, which is an update on the strategic planning process.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Mullin, members of the Board. I'd like to welcome Ange Nelson and Lindsay Lammers to the podium. Ange Nelson has been serving in the role of internal facilitator for this strategic planning process that we've undertaken. And Lindsay Lammers is a staff member in our district and she is a member of the thirty-member strategic planning team, and they're here to provide an update on the process so far. Welcome.
Yeah, good evening. Thanks for having us tonight. So just a brief review of the timeline. Mid-September, we had thirty members, teachers, district staff, board members, community members, including parents, teachers, and students all come together to meet with Dr. Cook to develop a draft of our strategic plan. That's what we're going to review with you tonight. And then I'm actually going to talk more about that last piece of the timeline at the end of the review of the draft plan to talk about next steps, which would be action teams, more to come on that, and then your, your wall. So.
So I'm going to walk you through the process. Can you hear me okay? Okay. So as Angie said, that this was a thirty-person team, and it was a collaborative effort between all of the members that were there. We began by looking at our beliefs, and so the beliefs were not tied to school or education per se, but to each person's actual beliefs. And together, working in groups, we put together a list of twelve different beliefs. They're listed here. And continue on to the next page. The beliefs were the driving force as we went forward in this process. After we had the beliefs, we had those same groups write draft mission statements, so that ended up being about eight draft mission statements. One representative of each group then got together and using those draft mission statements, they compiled one that was representative of all of them. And this is, this is the, the draft mission that they came up with. It's important to note that the mission statement, or the goal of the mission statement, was to, to be lofty. Like, the idea there was that we are not yet here, this is what we want to become. And so you can kind of see that, I think, that the, the speakers that were here were talking a little bit about this as well.
In the packet, yeah.
Okay. Alright. Moving forward then, from that, we listed our objectives. So the objectives come from the mission statement. Once again, this was a collaborative effort wherein all of the, the people that were present, all of the voices were heard, and we worked together to establish these different objectives. It was really important for us to set high goals once again. You'll notice the use of a hundred percent throughout. We didn't want to say anything less than a hundred percent. It was really important to us that every student achieved these goals.
And maybe just to add, how Lindsay had talked about being lofty and having it be something that you want to aspire to. The strategic plan really is going to drive the work of the district over the next three to five years, and the objectives and the mission should be out there, and there should be a gap in what we're doing now and what we want to do. And that's really the point of our strategies and our action teams, so that we can reach these loftier goals.
To the level where, when we were going through this process, we were asking ourselves, is this what we're already doing? Are we accomplishing this? No, we want to push ourselves further and look even higher. So then, the, the last part was to draft the strategies. And so the, the point of the strategies was to look at our beliefs, look at our mission, and then write strategies that are very broad, that would meet our objectives. So as you look through the different strategies, you can start to see, or maybe see parts of the mission statement and parts of the belief statement in there. And again, these are broad, because these are what will kind of lead the action teams. There are eight of those. So underneath each of the strategies, you could have many different action items, I think.
Yeah, and maybe we'll just leave this one up so you have a chance to review. Really, so the next step then is tomorrow, our action team leaders will be trained by Dr. Cook, and there is a total of nine. So there's two co-leaders for one of the strategies, and each other strategy has one, one leader right now. What will be happening is a Google Form link will be sent out to community members. I think it's this...
Sunday.
Sunday. And it has already been brought out to staff where you can say which strategy you'd be interested in contributing to, and then action teams will be formed around that strategy. Over the next three months, the action teams will develop action team plans that will support the strategies that again will work to accomplish the mission and objectives. And then back, the planning team will come back together in February to review all of the action team plans. Once that's approved by the original planning team, it will come to you in March for Board approval.
I just want to reiterate that this was a very collaborative process. So when Angie mentioned at the start that the team was a representative of thirty different people, they were people from, like she said, all over the, all over the community, and that every person on that action team had a say in this. And if one person wasn't comfortable with something, then we sat and talked about that and worked it through. So I feel like the end result was really a consensus of the members of that thirty-person action team.
So just one last thing is to reemphasize, we're looking for members of the community as well as members of White Bear Lake Schools, employees to get involved in action teams. And that signup is available now. It's available on the district's website. It went out to staff last Friday, and it will be sent out in our publication that comes out on Sunday. So staff, community members should look for that. And if you wish to get involved in any of those different strategies, to join an action team to help us accomplish our mission, that would be a great way to, to get, to get involved.
And if there's any questions, people can contact me as well, and I can direct them to the right area.
Any other questions at all?
So I know that we've been talking about this through the work studies, but is there any questions? Thank you very much. Thank you very much for the information. Next, we'll move to item C2, the levy renewal presentation. Dr. Kaszczak?
Alright, thank you, Mr. Mullin, members of the Board. I'm going to walk over to the podium and do the presentation from there. This will be ten to fifteen minutes. It would be better if I was there speaking to you as a group rather than sitting here at a strange angle. So just give me a moment. Alright, again, thank you. So, Mr. Wald, Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations, and I have been conducting presentations throughout the community, throughout our, throughout our buildings, and throughout our different municipalities. And so we thought tonight would be an opportunity for us to, to do that here for the school board, as well as any viewers who may not have been able to attend an informational session. So I'm going to give a relatively brief version of the presentation, but we'll hit on the high points, and then certainly Board members, if you have any follow-up questions or questions as we go along, please do ask. So we've highlighted that we, we've concentrated, we have buildings concentrated in the southern part of the school district, and we, those, those pins on the map on the left indicate that. And we highlight that because we have growth occurring in the school district, enrollment growth, and much of that growth is occurring in the northern part of the school district. And we'll talk a little bit about our, our plan to address that impending growth towards the end of the presentation. Last school year, we hired a demographer to come in and conduct a study for us to help us determine what our, our enrollment might be in five years and in ten years. Using a base enrollment of eighty-two-hundred, so last November, December, our base enrollment was eighty-two-hundred. Using that figure, our demographer came up with a five-year projection of eighty-six-seventy to about nine thousand students. And then a ten-year projection of approaching ninety-five-hundred. Now I point out the, the five-year projection of eighty-six-seventy is, is the bottom of that range. I want you to just remember that number for a moment. So fast forward to opening enrollment. You can see the, the line on the, on the bot, the line, not the bottom line, the one just above that, the eighty-six-sixteen. So our opening enrollment was eighty-six-sixteen. So recall, the five-year projection was eighty-six-seventy to about nine thousand students. So we, we are approaching that five-year estimate already. Our enrollment trend here for the last eight, eight years has been, has been positive. You'll notice that in twenty-twelve, thirteen, we actually bottomed out. At that point, our K-12 enrollment was seven thousand nine hundred and seventy-two, and since that time, we've grown each year. And last, last year compared to this year, it took quite a jump. So we increased our enrollment four percent from October one of last year to October one of this year. So, our eighty-five-seventy-nine as of October one, again, is, is approaching that five-year estimate for our enrollment. One thing we'd like to highlight at this point is that our, our enrollment growth is obviously occurring in the north with, with new houses being built, but we're also seeing growth in the southern part of the school district. And in fact, the elementary school with the largest percentage increase year over year was Lake Ayers. So we're seeing houses turn over and more and more families moving into neighborhoods in some of our southernmost elementary schools. While we're growing, we're also changing. So we've, we've changed in the last decade. For example, about a decade ago, eighty-four percent of our students were white. Now that figure is seventy-five percent. We have about fifty home languages spoken, other than English. That's up from twenty-five just a few years ago. So at a time when we're, we're experiencing fairly significant growth, we're also seeing significant changes to our, our student body as well. So it's, and it's an exciting time in White Bear Lake Schools for, for a lot of reasons, and those are a couple of them. Alright, specific to the levy, election day is coming up on November seventh. Please remember to vote on or before November seventh. We conducted a survey last spring in anticipation of, of levy renewal, and we learned that the public feels pretty good about White Bear Lake Area Schools. We asked the question of respondents in a survey, if you could grade the school district, if you could give the district a grade of A, B, C, D, or F, what grade would you give the school district? And eighty-three percent of those who shared an opinion on that question gave us an A or a B. That's quite high. It's higher than where we were at back in twenty-thirteen. That's the last time we asked that question. And it's also higher than a, a benchmark for, for school districts throughout the country. So we actually came in higher than the national benchmark. Again, people feel pretty good about White Bear Lake Schools. In terms of the operating levy specifically, there is support for that. The initial support, the, the initial question respondents responded quite positively to a sixty-nine percent support. When they, when respondents were informed of some of the programs that we, we offer with some, with the resources from the operating levy, support grew to seventy-five percent. And then when we reminded, when we reminded respondents that there was no tax increase, this is just a straight renewal, support grew to, up to over eighty percent. So again, it's a sign that there's, there's positive support out there for White Bear Lake Schools. So, tax impact, a little bit of financial information here, prepared by our financial advisors, Ellers. Our operating levy is at one thousand five hundred and thirty-eight dollars per pupil. For us, that generates about fourteen-point-two million dollars annually. Our annual budget is a little over a hundred million, so you can see that it's a fairly significant portion of our, of our revenue. Tax impact, if you, if you follow the values on the left column, those are, those are the values of property. So residential homestead apartments and commercial industrial property. We've highlighted a couple of examples. So a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar home would actually see, well, all of these would actually see a slight decrease in the overall tax impact with the renewal. We're not touting this as a tax decrease. We're just simply saying this is a, this is a renewal. We're not asking for any additional revenue. We're asking for what we currently have. And just by the way the, the calculation works in year one of it, it's a, it's just a slight decrease in that first year. Alright, I mentioned a little earlier that we conducted a survey, and initial support was about sixty-nine percent. And then when, when we talked about some of the things we're doing in our schools, support grew to about seventy-five percent. Mr. Wald is here to talk through some of those items that our public feels pretty good about. I should mention too, that of the respondents on the survey, only about thirty percent actually had children attending schools in White Bear Lake. So when you see some of those data where, you know, eighty-three percent of those responding feel, feel pretty positive about what's going on in White Bear Lake Schools, that doesn't just include parents, it includes the community as a whole. So Mr. Wald is going to highlight some of these. I like, Mr. Wald had a lot to do with some of these, or he was part of the team that implemented some of this work, certainly. And I like, it's a, it's a nice opportunity for him to, to talk about some of these things. I should mention too, to the audience, so I was, I was the Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, and when I was named Superintendent, one of my first tasks was to hire my replacement. And Mr. Wald is a longtime principal in the district, was hired to replace me as Assistant Superintendent for Finance. So, welcome, Mr. Wald.
Welcome.
Thank you. Some people might think it's because I was the candidate who looked the most like the superintendent. There are a number of items that, as Dr. Kaszczak said, resonated well with survey respondents. And one was, the first bullet, that our high school students have an opportunity to choose from forty-two college credit courses, and those aren't all courses identified for just students at the top of the class rank. We've identified a number of courses that require no prerequisite to enroll in. I think the survey respondents value that when high school students have an opportunity to complete a college credit course and stay in their high school setting, that there's great value in that. Career pathway work also resonated well with survey respondents. We have career pathways in manufacturing, construction trades, information technology, and health careers. Students participating in paid internship work during the summer and learning more about opportunities in careers. And really, we're seeing those discussions occurring at the earliest ages in our elementary schools. Teachers having conversations with students about dreaming about what opportunities lie ahead of them. Opportunities in the middle school to explore career opportunities and then the career pathway work at the high school. The idea of, of, of programs that provide individual advancement and support. We look at, at our intervention programs with our earliest learners, all the way through our Avid programs and our programs in the secondary schools. Survey respondents thought it made a lot of sense that we should identify students who struggle and make sure they get the support they need. Our Avid program in the secondary schools enrolls in the neighborhood of two hundred students, and it's one of the most gratifying events of the year is to attend Avid graduation at South Campus in early June. Finally, the last two bullets, district-wide support for world languages, K-12 orchestra program that's growing every year. We add, we added seventh grade this year, and next year, eighth grade, and so on, as well as gifted programs at all of our elementary schools and our school within a school at Lincoln for gifted learners. Finally, our graduation rate is, hovers around ninety percent year after year, and that's well above the state average of about eighty-two percent. So those are some of the areas that, that resonated well with our survey respondents.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wald. Alright, a couple of other things. We have a spirit of partnership in our, in our school district. We've highlighted just a few here, but there are countless partnerships. You go to any of our schools and there are, there are, as I said, I suppose there's a, there's a finite number, but every school has, has partnerships that really do connect our schools with our, with our various communities. It's a spirit of partnership that actually emerged through our strategic planning process as a priority, as a, as a strategy as we move forward. We've been good stewards of the public's money. We have a double-A bond rating, and that was just affirmed in the last month with our refinancing of some of our debt, which we'll actually be bringing to a conclusion tonight with a, an agenda item later, later in the meeting. About a quarter of school districts in Minnesota have a, a double-A bond rating, so it's, it's, it's a good mark. So it's a good mark, it's a good mark of stewardship. We've also been awarded excellence in financial reporting awards from a couple of different national organizations for seventeen consecutive years. We learned in the survey that the district could be trusted to properly manage additional local tax revenue. In fact, that was a question that came out of that survey. So again, we've been good stewards of the public's money, and our community has noticed that. And I want to clarify, we're not asking for additional tax revenue. We're actually asking for what we currently are receiving on the operating levy. So as we look forward, we touched on the enrollment growth. We anticipate that to continue. Again, the housing growth in the north, the houses are turning over in the southern part of the district. So it's a very positive position to be in. After many years of declining enrollment, we've turned the corner, and now we're growing quite nicely as we look into the future. Our work has begun on our new strategic plan. Again, as you heard earlier, that will be wrapped up sometime this winter and presented to you in March for approval. And at that point, we'll begin a comprehensive facilities planning process that will address the coming needs as we continue to grow. In addition, there are some other facilities needs that perhaps have been around a long time. And we're going to create a forum for those facilities issues to be discussed. So with that, that's a condensed version of the presentation. I'm happy to take any questions from board members.
Thank you, Dr. Kasmatrick. Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, back on your eight-year enrollment trend, I'm just, and that's page seventy-five on our screen here, right there. Just a little bit curious why the six through eight and the nine through twelve groups are counted twice.
They're not counted twice in the eighty-five, seventy-nine. They're just broken down so we can compare cohorts.
Would not the six through eight be part of the six through twelve group?
They are, but the eighty-five, seventy-nine includes the K through five and the six through twelve lines. It doesn't, we're not double counting anything.
Okay.
We're just highlighting that cohort so you can compare year to year what that cohort looked like.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any other questions? I know that, oh, sorry, Mr. Chapman?
For purposes of not only this group here, but those on cable, could you just mention the municipalities and the various organizations that have expressed their support for this levy?
So far, we have the City of Hugo, we have the White Bear Area Chamber, Badness Heights Economic Development Corporation have all endorsed. We presented to Badness Heights City Council last week, and they have indicated support. We're going to follow up with them with a resolution. We present to the City of White Bear Lake, I believe that's tomorrow, if I'm not mistaken. And so we'll find out, we'll gauge their support. And then we have to get a meeting scheduled yet with the township as well. But, so we have a handful of those, and those are available on the district's website to see the organizations or municipalities who've endorsed or supported. Thanks.
Senator Uyghur also wrote a letter of support this morning, sent it out, so I just wanted to mention that. And then also, I noticed that there's a good number of students in the audience tonight. So I would just ask you that if you have any additional questions, if you need clarification, once we adjourn the meeting tonight, please approach the board here, and we'd be happy to explain that to you. And also, if you need signatures, because I suspect you're here for a class, all right? We'll take care of that then too. Not that you, I doubt your interest in our normal proceedings, but I know better.
Any other questions? Dr. Kasmatrick, thank you very much. I know that you guys have been out presenting this to different PTOs and different school boards, so I really appreciate that. I know that board members have been attending those too, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we'll turn to action, or we'll turn to information item C three, the superintendent's report. Dr. Kasmatrick?
Back over here. All right, thank you, Mr. Mullin, members of the board. All right, before tonight's meeting, we recognize students who received honors in the AP Scholars Program, the National Merit Program, and the National Hispanic Recognition Program. Congratulations, students. Homecoming week, the district is celebrating homecoming this week with a variety of activities, including fun-filled spirit days, tonight's coronation event, pep fests, Friday's homecoming parade through downtown White Bear Lake, and the football game, and Saturday's bear-powered six-point-two-four K homecoming walk run and homecoming dance. We hope you join us for the community celebrations. District students are encouraged to wear orange on Wednesday, October twenty-fifth, in honor of Unity Day, the signature event of National Bullying Prevention Month that has been recognized in the United States since two thousand and eleven. October is a busy month for recognitions, including Dyslexia Awareness Month, National Principals Month. October second is National, or was National Custodial Worker Day. October fifth was World Teachers' Day, today Indigenous Peoples' Day, and Columbus Day. October ninth through thirteenth, so this week, National School Lunch Week. October fifteenth marks the end of Hispanic Heritage Month. And October fifteenth through the twenty-first is National Safe Schools Week and National School Bus Safety Week. Tickets for the White Bear Lake Area High School Fall Musical, Footloose, will be available to the public on October thirteenth at the district's website. The show will be performed November tenth through eleventh and November sixteenth through eighteenth at the White Bear Lake Area High School North Campus Theater. The high school musicals are always a fun fall event, so don't miss your opportunity to be part of what is sure to be a packed house. The Minnesota Community Education Association awarded us the project award for our community forum on seniors' work in the five areas of health and wellness, services, recreation, transportation, and housing that took place over the last couple of school years. The project award is awarded annually at the State, the Community Education Association State Conference to a project that exemplifies community education. The formal presentation to the district will take place in November after the state fall conference. We invite community members to learn more about the district's local operating levy renewal. That will be on the ballot on November seventh. Find information on the district's website at www.isd624.org/locooperatinglevyrnewal. At this time, we'd like to show a brief video that highlights the district's strong schools, community, and tomorrows. The White Bear Lake School District is an outstanding school district.
It's just a really good area to grow up in.
It's a perfect location with a very successful school district.
Out and about in the community, when you run into people, they're so warm and so welcoming.
There's a sense of pride of just saying, I am a bear. I love being a bear. I love being in White Bear Lake.
One of the reasons why I stay here is because I feel like I belong in this community.
There is just a great sense of pride in every one of our schools.
We know that each student that walks through our doors has unique needs. Because of our innovative programming, we're able to personalize each student's educational experience.
There's a ton of opportunities, like I'm pretty sure I haven't even looked at all of them yet.
And you'll need your engineering notebook.
The mission's very clear. We want our kids to be the best academic achievers they possibly can be, but they want to be happy while they're here. So that all starts with the trusting relationship between the staff and the students.
Halfway on his shimmer body.
I think that what makes the schools very strong in this district is the staff and the way that everyone supports each other and really comes together to share ideas and look for what's going to be best for the students.
When you drive around and see all of the bears in people's yards, it just shows that people are really dedicated to the community.
Everyone is so friendly, and it makes you feel like you want to stay here and you want to really be part of that community.
Every piece of our community is interwoven together, which makes our district something special.
We're having new people move in all the time, and we are the thread that binds the community together. It's the school system. And the value, I think, that we bring to the community is very apparent, and the community values us.
White Bear Lake has so many wonderful opportunities for students, for teachers, and just that sense of community and pride. It's such a big thing to be part of.
It's really exciting to see where the kids get to go and how they kind of progress in the different programs that they have available to them. The ability to get credits before they leave school.
Lots and lots of options to save a lot of college tuition and have other options for kids to be able to look at other things beyond high school.
There are so many great things happening in the arts department. We have so many different ensembles. We have the orchestra that was added a couple of years ago, and that has been very well received by the teachers, by the students, and by the parents.
We also provide many opportunities for students to learn world languages and to learn about other cultures.
There's so many opportunities for each kid to kind of find who they are. And that is really important for kids to kind of explore and see where they fit. So it's really good to know that there's so many different options out there for each kid.
So our community has supported our schools in many ways, including by supporting our past operating levy referenda. We're asking for a renewal of our existing levy. We're not asking for more. We have actually taken the resources and managed those resources very well.
We're really trying to be good stewards of our public's money and continue to make sure we expand opportunities for kids and also do a good job by making sure we keep our class sizes relatively comfortable for our teachers.
This renewal would be for ten years, and that would provide the district a decade of financial stability as we look to continually improve and provide more opportunities for our students. White Bear Lake Area Schools has a great reputation. We have a strong community with a great sense of pride, and we want to continue that into the future. The levy renewal that's on the ballot on November seventh will allow the district to continue to serve students and families for the next decade without an increase in taxes. We encourage you to learn more about the levy renewal by visiting the district's website, and remember to vote on or before November seventh.
All right, in addition to our operating levy that's on the ballot, four school board seats will be on the ballot as well this fall. With the vote early window beginning October thirty-first, we encourage our community to get out and vote on or before November seventh. Ashley, your turn.
Thank you, Dr. Kasmatrick. To start off the report, I'd like to highlight one of our very own high school seniors who is doing very important work with a local nonprofit. Starting in two thousand and fifteen, Sidney Peterson became involved with the nonprofit H2O for Life. With some help from her neighbor, she organized a local walk for water to raise funds for a well at the Oprata Primary School in Uganda. She raised over nineteen hundred dollars and had over eighty participants. Since then, she started interning at H2O for Life twice a week throughout the school year and five times a week during the summer. In two thousand and sixteen, she organized a second walk for water to raise funds for the Chub Ramdang School in Cambodia. She raised over fourteen hundred dollars and have over a hundred participants. She was recently the keynote speaker at the Water Ball at the U of M and at a town hall meeting with Governor Dayton's administration concerning the water crisis. We applaud Sidney's contributions both to our community and the world. To reiterate what Dr. Kasmatrick said, this week is homecoming. This week has been highly anticipated, and the students are very excited. Some of this week's activities include coronation, dress-up days, pep fests at both North and South Campus, the homecoming parade on Friday after school, the football game, and the dance on Saturday. We are looking forward to a fantastic week showing our White Bear Lake spirit. As far as student council goes, we have been very busy. Our Harvest Bowl football game generated more than two thousand pounds of food to go to the White Bear Lake food shelf, a record-breaking number. Two weeks ago, we hosted a lunch for the new students to our school. This helped them meet a few more people, and some of them even decided to join student council. Last week, we sent a group of students to the Capital Division Fall Conference. There, they were able to interact and share ideas with students from other schools. We are currently in the planning stages of our annual food drive, and we are putting forth all of our efforts to make sure it's the best one yet. For sports, we have many teams who have been very successful thus far in the fall season. Our girls soccer team finished the regular season ranked first in the suburban East Conference and are looking to advance in playoffs. Our boys and girls cross-country teams have also had excellent seasons thus far. Most recently, the boys team finished third and the girls sixth in a meet with twenty-one teams. Go Bears!
Thank you both. We'll now turn our attention to the discussion items, D one, the twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen World's Best Workforce Report Summary. Ms. Sarah Paul?
All right, Mr. Mullin, Dr. Kasmatrick, members of the board. I'm just going to be going through the required requirements from statute that the school board is responsible for as we deliver on our expectations for the World's Best Workforce statute. This was put into place back in two thousand and thirteen, and some of the things that were driving this statute, I just want to recall back our attention to some of the things that they were looking at at the legislature. One was that in the state, across the state, our population is aging. They were looking at seventy percent of jobs that are going to require more than a high school diploma by two thousand and eighteen. They were looking at many of the jobs out there, there were not enough qualified candidates to fill those high-paying jobs. We have the fastest-growing segment in the future workforce is students of color. And they were looking at academic data of students that were showing the lowest graduation rate within those population segments. And that Minnesota has one of the worst black-white achievement gaps in the country. So they put into statute this striving for the world's best workforce, and they were calling upon districts to put together plans in order to look across multiple different milestones in a child's education to make sure that we were delivering a sound education to prepare them for post-secondary options. These milestones start in our system in pre-K. So we're looking at preparing all children for school. So are children ready for kindergarten when they arrive at school? Are all third graders reading at grade level? They're looking at all racial and economic achievement gaps between students being closed. And all students ready for college and career, and all students graduating from high school. So back in two thousand and thirteen, when this was passed, it was about the time that I came here. And one of the best things about White Bears that we had been working from a strategic plan, many districts across the state were not at that place. And so they were scrambling with implementation. And these were things that were already deeply part of the conversation here in White Bear. And over the last several years, we've really made great gains in terms of looking at and delivering better results, better opportunities for our students, therefore better outcomes showing up as we look at the record of our school district. Several things are required in the statute for school board members to be tracking and being paid, paying attention to. And I'm going to highlight and go through each of these in terms of the work over the last year. So this is really focused on our work for two thousand and sixteen, seventeen. And in addition to that, we've spent quite a bit of time looking at a comprehensive update of our academic work from two thousand and sixteen, seventeen, and the last work study. So if anybody is interested in looking at that, they can look at our work study presentation notes. In addition to that, we've attached the more pared-down version of the World's Best Workforce Required Report, which is in tonight's information. And then we're going to just highlight a couple of key things here that have happened over the course of the last year. First, there were several meetings that took place in which we engaged the community in terms of making sure we broadened our understanding and perspective of what students thought, parents thought, so that when we brought recommendations and thinking of programming to you at the board level, we had been engaging multiple stakeholders. So here I just listed the four workforce, World's Best Workforce meetings that we conducted and what the focus of those conversations were. Next, you'll see that there was a natural trajectory of how those conversations were brought to you in school board presentations. And so these were the board presentations that we had last year that are all related to each of the World's Best Workforce milestones. In addition, we are required in statute to have a committee that reflects the diversity of our community. So not only do we have to take into consideration the north and south side of the district, different levels of education, elementary, middle, and high school, making sure we have teachers, parents, community members, support staff. And so within those requirements, we have always met those expectations. Last year, you had asked me in the presentation last year of our World's Best Workforce, you asked about how we were going to deepen participation of community members. One of the things that happened last year that was very significant for us was that we did a very extensive needs analysis. We, one of the funding streams that we get is achievement integration funding. And so we took a deep look at how we were engaging families. And so a big change you saw this year is that we've increased the number of cultural liaisons we have in the district. And we're working more intentionally with the two cultural liaisons that we have in the preschool program. And then we have three cultural liaisons that serve families across the district. And you're going to see them being very intentional, reaching out to families to engage in our strategic planning process. out to families to engage in our strategic planning process. And then though, we'll also be conducting focus groups before we have our World's Best Workforce Committee meeting so that we can make sure that we're broadening the voice for perspectives that we're striving to understand so that every student is being challenged at their level and having a great experience here in White Bear. That's in line with the recommendations that the World's Best Workforce Committee gave us. They want us to make sure that we keep focusing on closing achievement and opportunity gaps. We had very rich discussion around when we use the words achievement gap, what that creates in terms of a sense of confidence for a student versus looking at opportunity gaps and making sure that every student has access to rigorous programming at their level and making sure that all students know the opportunities that are available to them. And that was something that was very important to the World's Best Workforce Advisory Committee. Secondly, making sure that we expand opportunities for communications, which I have already spoken to. So what we gained and the depth of understanding we had has also shown in very clear action in terms of how we're going to accomplish that this year. And then we're required to post progress, post how we're doing according to each of the milestones that are in the World's Best Workforce Plan and so all of those are available on our website. So in terms of meeting statutory requirements, we are meeting all of our expectations. I think more than anything, when we talk about helping each child develop their unique talents and abilities, which is part of our mission statement, and you'll also see us carried over into the draft mission statement that we're designing around moving forward, we're doing all we can to make that happen. So with that, I know we gave you quite a comprehensive update or document in your meeting notes and so I'm going to ask Brian Morris to come on up here in case you have any questions for us.
Thank you both very much. Are there any questions?
I know that we've been going through this several times, so thank you both very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would now like to turn to item D2, the first reading of six board policies. The way that this works is the policy committee reviews the policies of the district, makes recommendations back to the school board. We have two readings of those policies. This is the first reading. So what I'd like to do is ask Mr. Kimball if he would be willing to go through the policies. Policy 201, legal status of the school board. Policy 203, operation of the school board, governing rules. Policy 203, addendum A, rules of order. Policy 303, superintendent selection. Policy 533, wellness. And Policy 701, establish and adoption of a school district budget. Ask him to review the changes for the audience.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mullin. So policies are perhaps not the most glamorous part of a school organization, but very crucial to district operation. We have a policy committee that meets regularly and reviews the policies that are in place and makes, suggests revisions as needed. Oftentimes, the changes come from the Minnesota School Boards Association, recommended revisions to policies or new policies in some cases. And so then we bring it here and we have a chance to hear the changes and discuss and public and hear what's going on and then we eventually will vote on and typically approve the policy changes. So the first one, Policy 201, legal status of the school board. The policy itself just establishes that the care management and control of the schools is vested by statute and constitutional authority in the school board. And I don't know that I mentioned that all of the policies are subject to review on a consistent basis. Many of the policies really don't have a lot of changes. Sometimes there are minor grammatical changes. And in this case, that's true with this particular policy. There are just two very minor wording changes that do not affect the content or the meaning of the policy. So that's that one. The second policy that we're looking at is Policy 203, operation of the school board. And the purpose of this policy is to just provide governing rules for the conduct of the meetings of the school board, which is what we're doing right now. We're meeting. And there are no proposed changes to the policy itself, but this policy does have an addendum. And there's one suggested change to the addendum, which is the rules of order. And it was noticed by our chair, Janet Newburg, who is not here tonight, but Janet is a female. And in this rules of order, the wording of one of the paragraphs suggests that the chair is always a male. And so she didn't like that at all, which is correct. And so we're changing to remove the gender, outdated gender suggestion of this addendum. And that's the change there. The third policy, 303, superintendent selection. And the purpose of this policy is to let the school community know that the authority to select and employ a superintendent, as we recently did, is vested in the school board. And so again, with this policy, there are no changes of substance or meaning. There's just a couple of minor wording changes and an addition of a legal reference. Policy, the final policy, or excuse me, second to the last policy, is 533, and that is the wellness policy. And this one actually is a significant policy in terms of a lot of new language and revised language. The purpose of this policy, and this might be the most relevant to the students that are here today, is to promote student wellness, prevent and reduce childhood obesity, and ensure that school meals and other food and beverages sold and otherwise made available on the school campus during the school day are consistent with applicable local, state, and federal standards. So when students notice, especially students notice that something that they always liked is no longer available during the day in the vending machine, our fault. We made policy out of that for your own good. And so there is significant language change and these are all available, you know, on the district website and you can get access to the policies. But I just want to mention on this particular one because there's too many revisions to go over unless we wanted to be here till 11:00. Then no one would get to see any of the Vikings game. This particular policy, the language changes have been suggested almost entirely by the Minnesota School Boards Association. And just want to note, I'm reading from the school board association's site on this policy. "All school districts that participate in the national school lunch and school breakfast programs are required by the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act of 2010 to have a wellness policy that includes standards and nutrition guidelines for foods and beverages made available to students on campus during the school day as well as specific goals for nutrition promotion and education, physical activity, and other school-based activities that promote student wellness." So there's just very elaborate requirements that are all put into this wellness policy. So the areas have to do with requiring that members of the public have some input into the decisions that are made. There are goals that have to be defined for the wellness policy. Definitions were added to this policy. There's also requirements that not only, you know, in school lunches or vending machines, but in your classes that students have, that there be an attempt in curriculum writing that wellness and nutrition are brought in through various classes embedded in curriculum. So also, teachers are encouraged, to the extent possible, to provide some physical activity. So don't tell your teachers that I said this, but like if you're just sitting there all day and the teacher's just lecturing, you're getting, you could say, hey, the wellness policy says we should have some physical activity. So you could like get up and march around or something like that. So anyway, it's a very broad, all-encompassing policy, cross-district, cross-classrooms, cross-teachers. And we think that in particular, we often think of the meals, the lunches when we think of wellness policy, and that's a big part of it. And, you know, we think that our nutrition staff here are doing a great job in taking the requirements and turning them into great choices for students and while also being very healthy and nutritious. So, yep, I think that would be it. Last policy, Policy 701, establishment and adoption of school district budget. And the purpose of this policy is to establish lines of authority and procedures for the establishment of the school district's revenue and expenditure budgets. We already heard that, for example, a big part of our budget is the operating levy and we heard a lot about that today. In this particular policy, again, this falls into the category of no changes of substance. There's literally just one deletion of a statute and that's the only change in that policy.
Is there any questions, concerns regarding any of those policies? Mr. Chapman?
No question or concern regarding a specific policy. I'm just wondering if, I noticed in the past, we had put just a small blurb as to whether or not the policy needed any changes on the cover memo or if it was something that was brought about, the changes as a result of MSBA. I'm just wondering if we could continue to, you know, going forward, place those little, just very brief comments in. It would be very helpful because sometimes I'm familiar with some of these from past years and if there's not a change, I don't, you know, due to the essence of time, I don't necessarily, you know, would prefer not to be looking through all of the different pages to try and find changes. Just a request, I guess, on my part.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? With that, those policies, we'll come back for a final reading at the November board meeting. But with that, we'll turn to our first operational item of the evening, operational item E1, the action on resolution to ratify the award of the sale of the bonds. Dr. Kozmicek?
I'd like to welcome Mr. Wall to the podium to introduce this item.
Welcome, Mr. Wall.
Thank you, Chairperson Mullin, members of the board. At our September 11th board meeting, we apprised the board of the opportunity to refinance bonds as a means would save significant, significant resources for our taxpayers. We also discussed at that time that typically, bonds are sold on the day of a board meeting and they're ratified that evening. But because today is Columbus Day, Happy Columbus Day, everyone. Today was not a day when, a federal holiday, those bonds couldn't be sold. So at that September 11th board meeting, you agreed, or you passed a resolution allowing the superintendent and board chair, Newberg, to ratify the sale of those bonds on October 4th. So tonight, we have with us Gary Olson from our financial advisors, Illars Incorporated. And Gary's going to explain the sale of the bonds, the bid tabulation, and the attached resolution, which will ratify the award of the bonds. So welcome Gary Olson from Illars Incorporated.
Welcome.
Good evening. Pleasure to be here tonight. Basically, we're very, very happy with the results of the sale last Wednesday. We got seven bids, which is always good. The more bids, the better. The best bid came from JP Morgan out of New York with an interest rate of 1.2897. And I believe when we presented last month, I think we were projecting something more like 1.68 or 1.69. So we have actually a decrease of 0.4% on the rate. And so that's a great result. And what that means, if you look down in the little table on the first page there, you'll see the future result savings are up to $807,000. That's the actual reduction to payments. Now, some of that money isn't saved till 2022. And so if you discount it and do what we call present value calculation of that, it's still $775,000. And that's a 6.3% savings. State statute requires that that savings has to be at least 3% for it to be a legal refunding. So you're well, well above that and well above the parameters that were set in the sales resolution that was adopted at the last meeting. So we saved about $164,000 more than had been projected. And so it'll result in reductions in tax levies, taxes payable 2019 through 2022 of about $266,000 a year for your taxpayers. And so then in addition to that, what you'll see is our more detailed financial tables. The next one is the actual bid tab from the various bids. And what you can see there is the best bid was 1.2897. Next one is extremely close, 1.298. So about 1,000 or 1/100th of a percent difference between the first bid and the second bid. And you see, all the rest of the bids are pretty tight as well, the highest bid being at 1.39. That's still well below what we had been projecting. The next page shows the sources and uses, kind of where the money comes from in terms of the paramount of the bonds plus the premium the underwriters are paying, and then how the money is spent in terms of underwriters' discount, which is where they make their money, cost of issuance, deposit to the escrow account. This money goes into an escrow account and will sit there until next February, 19, when the bonds will be called. And then there's always a rounding amount typically because when you sell bonds, you have to sell them in $5,000 increments. So there's always some little bit of rounding that occurs there. The next page shows the bonds that are actually being refunded, the remaining bonds of $11,065, and the payments and the interest rates on those. The next page then, attachment page five, shows the payments on the new bonds and the interest rates that go with those. The rates look high, but remember, those rates are offset by the fact that they paid you a large premium. And so that the net effect of that, of those interest rates is still getting you back down to that 1.28 or 1.29% interest rate. And then the last page, page six, shows the comparison of the savings. There is a little bit, as we put the savings together by year, we looked at that and there's a kind of a, there's a little bump in your debt service tax levies that starts next year and goes for three years. And so rather than save some of the money this year, we put all the savings into the next three years to try and minimize that little bit of an increase that's in your debt service levy over those next three years rather than having it uniform across. And we talked to the district administration about that and that's kind of what we thought would be the best way to do that. The other thing that's really interesting in this, and you probably don't think about the fact that the government dealt with the debt ceiling. Well, one of the, what happens when you, when you sell these bonds and the money goes into an escrow account, there's a special kind of, or kind of investment that you can use just for these escrow accounts called slugs, state and local government series. And those would not have been available without that. But the interest rates on the slugs were high enough... But the interest rates on the slugs were high enough that we were able to match the interest rate on the bonds. So if you look down on, in that last page on page seven, actual positive or negative arbitrage, you actually ended up at zero. So it's, it's what we call a perfectly efficient escrow account, where the, the interest in the escrow account is offsetting the interest on the, on the bonds that are being paid by the escrow account. So it works out perfect on, in that way. And then the last thing is a copy of the rating report. And again, we spent about an hour on the phone with Standard and Poor's, going through all kinds of information about your district. And again, they affirmed your AA rating, which is, as Dr. Kazmercheck had said earlier, very high rating. They also, you get the state credit enhanced rating, because you agreed to participate in that program. And so if you look on page nine there, they say some nice things about your district. And again, remember, the rating isn't just on things you can control, but it's also about your economy and your community and all those. And so they liked a lot of things there about your strong community and the basis and being in the, in the metro area, a strong incomes and extremely strong market values in your district, increasing enrollment, they like that, very strong general fund reserves, and relatively low overall debt burden for a district your size and with the tax base you have. And so they liked all those things, went through and talked about all those things in terms of, we were kind of hoping that as you're moving forward, maybe within the next couple times, as you're continuing to build your fund balance, we're hoping that maybe they'll see clear of bumping up another notch. They're really slow about doing that. You have to kind of, they want to see several years of improvement before they do something like that. So they're really slow about doing that, and it gets kind of frustrating, but that's kind of what happens. In terms of upward scenarios, they talk about on page 12, they talk about increasing in the economy in your district, and, you know, more employers, bigger, higher income and all those kinds of things, as well as a district continuing to increase its fund balance. On the downward side, worry about possibility of, if your fund balance started to decrease at some point, that might create a downward, downward. But we don't see that happening. So overall, very good rating, very positive rating from the, from the rating agency, so we're very happy with that, and very happy about the results and saving more than we had anticipated. So you have that, essentially, it's already been approved per the last resolution you adopted on this one, just ratifies the actions that were taken last Wednesday.
So there is a recommendation that we approve, move to approve the resolution ratifying the award of the cell, determining the form and details authorizing the execution, delivery, registration, and providing for the payment of the general obligation alternative facilities refund bond, Series 2017A as presented. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
I think Mr. Newmaster got you by a hair.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Wilson. This would require a roll call vote.
Okay. Chapman?
Oh, excuse me, excuse me. Sorry, discussion? I apologize. Are there any questions? This would require a roll call vote. Thank you.
Chapman?
Aye.
Kimball?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. There's a group of documents I'll leave with your staff to sign afterwards. It's mainly the chair, the clerk, and the treasurer, so understanding the chair isn't here, we'll have to get those signed later, and we have an envelope to send everything back. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll move to operation, item E2, action on the resolution for combined primary polling places for the 2018 state primary and state general election. Mr. Mauer?
Chairperson Mullen, members of the board. We were back here in the spring when elections, manager Joe Mansky asked us to do the same thing for 2017, and we're simply asking, he's simply asking us to do the same thing for the 2018 election, specifically for those three precincts in Lino Lakes for the primaries in 2018 for the state elections.
All right. There is a, bear with me 30 seconds. Sorry, guys, there's, we're all trying to catch up.
The darn bond thing was so long.
Yeah.
Lot of pages.
Go down to about page 200.
Perfect. Resolution, there's a recommendation, the administration recommends the school board approve the resolution to combine the three polling places, P1, P4, and P6 in Lino Lakes area for the 2018 state primary and state general election. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Motion by Mr. Wilson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Chapman. Is there any discussion? This would require a roll call vote.
Chapman?
Aye.
Kimball?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you very much. And our final operation item, action on grant from the Greater White Bear Lake, Greater White Bear Lake Community Foundation. Dr. Kazmercheck?
Thank you, Mr. Mullen. I'd like to welcome Connie Dixon to the podium. Connie is from the United Methodist Church Faith in Action team, and she will highlight what this grant is all about.
Thank you for having me. I've enjoyed listening, I really have. So I am part of a group of seven women who, three years ago, decided we wanted to find needs and fix them and help them, whatever we could do. And the seven of us started a group called Faith in Action. And one thing that we found a need in right away was Willow School. So that was one of our first focuses, how could we help Willow School? And we talked to the principal. So for the past three years, we have been going to their school, and they have their Scholastic books during conferences, both in the fall and in the spring. And we take all of their free and reduced students, free lunch students, we take them, and we go and help them find books to buy. We give them a $10 certificate, which isn't really $10, but they have a $10 certificate. They can buy books, and they can take them home, and they're theirs. And we did that, starting with kindergarten the first year, and then we did first grade and kindergarten the second year. And this year, we're going to do first, second, and third grade. And very briefly, how have we funded this? We have sat around and made silly little bookmarks, sell them to our church on a Sunday every year, and tell them we need $500, and it's come through every time on one service, one day a month. So, or one day a year. So that's how we have been doing it. Well, we took advantage this year of writing a grant to the White Bear Lake Foundation. And it's really been great, because they have funded us $1,800 for White, for Willow School. And we've talked with the principal, she's very excited, she's working with us, and we're very excited. We're hoping in the near future that we will be giving free books every book fair to K through 5, and that's our hope. So this is why I'm here tonight, for that $1,800. Any questions?
All right. Thank you very much. We have a recommendation to move the approval, move the approve of the $1,800 grant for, from the Greater White Bear Lake Community Foundation to Willow Lane Elementary for Read 5,000. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Motion by Mr. Kimball, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wilson. I'll open it up for discussion. Kimball?
Yep, not, just another thank you. This is, this is a fantastic thing that you're doing. We all know the importance of reading and literacy, and to make this available to the students who need it most is really so much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This requires a roll call vote.
Chapman?
Aye.
Kimball?
Aye.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you very much. With that, I will go to board forum. This gives the board the opportunity to talk about things that are going on in the community and different things. And before I open it up, I just would like to say, I know this is homecoming week, they've said it a couple times, and I know that Friday night's the great football game, the community gets together to celebrate the black and orange. So with that, I just want to make sure I say very loudly, go Bears!
Go Bears!
Anybody else? Mr. Kimball?
I have five things. So tonight, there was in attendance a large number of students, and we thank you guys, you're awesome. Nobody even left like halfway through and tried to fake like you were here the whole time. And there also were a number of school community members who were showing support for the, for dyslexia training for staff, and we really appreciate the fact that they were here and are showing concern and support for, for these students. Prior to the meeting, we recognized dozens of advanced placement course and other academic, advanced placement AP test scholars and other academic scholars, and so congratulations to them. We have on, in the board packet tonight, a announcement of a retirement, and the retirement of Jean Anderson, fifth, or a teacher of a number of grades at Lake Ayers. And just on behalf of the board, we want to thank Jean for just an amazing 32-year career in White Bear Lake. I'm not the best person to talk about Jean, so many people know Jean so well, and I just know Jean some. And I, every interaction I have had, there just is nobody more positive, committed. She's just one of those people who was born to be a teacher, and you can just sense it and see it, her love for students. Ellen Faehu, who's not here tonight, sent a note just wanting to say that she had the privilege of working with Jean as a member's rights rep, and valued so much her advice, expertise, calm, and thorough approach and friendship. Janet Newberg isn't here tonight either, and she sent a note just saying the things that I've kind of said already, but also just include the fact that, you know, so many, many students who pass through Lake Ayers will always remember Jean, and perhaps especially the Penguins that she brought into the classroom year after year. And so we just thank Jean. Number four, the White Bear Lake Area Education Foundation put on its annual Bear Legacy Event fundraiser on September 29th at Delwood Country Club, and it was, despite the less-than-satisfactory work of the host, it was an outstanding event and raised tons of money, and it was just wonderful, wonderful evening. And thank you, foundation, for everything you do, and top-notch, first-class fundraiser.
Who was the host?
We're not going to name the host tonight. The other, the co-host was awesome. And then finally, students again. Not sure if any of you followed, you know, well the last item on the bond sale, can you raise your hand if any of you kind of followed and kind of understood it pretty well? And I don't know if any of you are taking any finance classes, economics maybe a little bit, but it was a big deal. And so if you have, if you're in finance or thinking about what you're going to do when you grow up, investment and sales of bonds and things is an awes, is a really good way to go. You can get really rich, for one thing. But to know that you, you know, things like AA ratings, how important they are to an organization, and the fact that we have that is really, really important, and it changes how much we have to pay in interest and so on. And, and just to know that, you know, one, one-tenth of 1% interest rate change, because your district has shown that you are good stewards of money, you have a healthy fund balance, and you've, you've got a healthy population of students, one-tenth of 1% can make a huge difference when you're talking about the kind of money that we're spending here. So keep that in mind.
Thank you, Mr. Kimball. With that, I would ask for adjournment.
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn.
And I'll second that. We are adjourned. So Wayne, you don't want me?